Down, 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 down there. And nobody here is so proud. I just want to, I just, I know. But if there's. We go down for one more. We get the money. We get rid of this.
No pedal, call them straight, order a bunch of flat.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing is approve the minutes from March eighteen, twenty twenty four meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Agenda amendments, what we have there.
None.
None? Public comment, that's in the agenda items. We don't have none. Correspondence, none?
None.
Approval of March twenty twenty four expenses.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Home business, Lisa?
Yeah.
New business, we have a motion to approve or deny declaration of disaster emergency. And it's nothing more than being prepared.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve or deny resolution twenty twenty four dash oh seven sale of equipment. Allows us to sell without further action after it's been advertised.
And this is on a logger?
It's a policy, we have to put a policy in place, but.
Okay.
Yeah, because we want this out of logger and no bit of receipt.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, donated use request. Motion at no charge, motion to approve or deny the Buffalo Lake Community Park ball fields, April first through June twenty first in Pick the Cana, May seventh and eighth, fourth till eight thirty P M.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve or deny Robinson Elementary, Pick the Cana, May twenty nine, twenty twenty four, second grade field trip.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, land development. Motion to approve or deny John M. and Jennifer R. Davis subdivision plan on nine eighty Town Hall Road with parcel ID number forty dash zero two two dash zero nine nine point zero dash zero three seven point oh one. R R, do you want to take that time?
Sure, so we received this subdivision plan on February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. It was in front of a planning commission. On March eleventh, twenty twenty four, they did recommend approval. And in front of Erie County Planning on March nineteenth, he also recommended approval. So what they're doing is they're just replotting this line. Um, pointer. Um, do you see where the Z marks are? That's where the line used to be. I'm sorry.
Do you want me to point?
Yeah. So you can see where the line was and where we're applying that one. So remove it.
No.
No, other way.
I'm sorry, the other way, to include the shed on that property.
Can I make a motion to approve?
I'll abstain if I'm involved.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve or deny Saddlewood Phase Three Land Development Plan, parcel ID number forty dash zero sixteen dash zero seven two point zero dash oh four three point oh six R two.
So I have this one, um, Saddlewood Phase Three Land Development Plan, received this plan in twenty twenty, in July twenty seven, twenty twenty, went from the planning commission. Um, in September fourteenth, twenty twenty, Erie County Planning, September eighteenth, twenty twenty. Um, so they are proposing to build nineteen residential condominiums, Saddlewood Phase Three, on ten point six three acre parcel. We received their developer's agreement, um, their fence waiver, their sewer planning module in twenty twenty. We just received their NFTs permit in twenty three, in July twenty fifth of twenty three. And their storm water agreement, we received March of this year. And that's what we are waiting for, their storm water agreement and their bond. So we received that, like to present it to you for your approval.
And that's private up in there?
Yes.
And that NFTs permit is?
We received the NFTs permit July twenty fifth, twenty three.
And that's a D E P permit?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, they also went from the zoning hearing board in twenty twenty, um, the required front yard setback is thirty feet. However, the zoning hearing board did grant a variance of five feet. So their front yard setback is twenty five feet off all those condos.
Thank you.
Okay, motion to approve or deny?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Ford State needs no action tonight. Business solicitor?
I have no report.
No report. Engineer Jonas?
Uh, just a few updates on projects. Uh, Pick the Cana playground grant application. Uh, this is due this Wednesday at four P M. I'm waiting on two letters of support. Uh, that's the last outstanding thing that I have. Everything else has been submitted onto the website. Uh, the website didn't crash once today, but went back, verified it all. Um, materials are on there, so we're in good shape with that. Hopefully, if we get those letters of support, we'll be able to submit tomorrow. Um, well, ahead of the schedule there. Uh, Zwilling, Footmill, and Mansion Road Holberg Replacements. We've gotten, um, the road occupancy permits to Waste Management for replacement of those haulers. Uh, they posted a forty nine thousand dollar bond for that project. So once we have a start date, we'll let you know. As far as I know, they've gotten approval from the D E P to start work. So we're just going out in the bin right now and once we have a date, I'll let everybody know. Uh, there's still no word on the Old Zoak Road Holberg, uh, grant, as well as the Downs Drive grant. This was the E C D local share count grant that we applied for last November. Uh, we still haven't had any word from the E C D. I checked right before the meeting today, and they're still pending. I've heard through the rumor mill, it might be September before we hear the announcement, but hopefully it'll be sooner than that. And then the last thing I have for tonight, um, we're currently under the forty five day planning review for the Durst Drive Vacation. This is Durst Drive off Embar Drive. We're looking to vacate that cul-de-sac that's never been used. Uh, forty five day planning review period goes until April twenty fifth. Uh, we're looking to advertise for May seventeenth and May first for a public hearing on May sixth. And then as part of the requirements, we also have to send a mailing to all affected property owners, which is the one property on the Durst Drive who's requesting the vacation. So that should be a non-issue. But we'll also post on Facebook on the website whenever the public hearing is advertised for. And that's all I have for today.
Thank you. Supervisors Mark?
Well, uh, we started cleaning all the trucks out, which sounds like we might need them again this week, but uh, in the time will tell there. Uh, guys been working on, uh, sweeping the roads, Peach Street primarily, uh, getting all sidewalks curbed by length. Um, um, working on few, few pieces of equipment inside the garage that we'll need here this summer. And, uh, just getting ready to start storm sewer. Catch bases have been ordered, um, probably start not on Zwilling. We have a little section of storms who were put in, just more of an under drain. And then we'll be bouncing out the new road and do a new road from Peach Street East. And probably eight hundred feet. So that's about it.
Thank you. Tony?
Um, putting the batting cages up tomorrow. Little League started practice tonight, but the field is still a little bit soggy. So those should be up tomorrow so the kids can start batting practice, et cetera. Um, the letter of support that Matt mentioned for the Pick the Cana, we actually met with Senator Loughlin last week, I guess it was. It sounded pretty promising for some help on that, about a hundred grand or so, maybe nine.
It's a four hundred thousand dollar project.
A project, yeah. The grants?
The grants for two hundred thousand. Uh, we have forty five thousand dollars worth in high services. The township's going to perform with our equipment and manpower. So we're left with a hundred and fifty five thousand left that we're looking for possible more funding. And just to speak real quick on that, we, I've had conversations with the county. The county's looking to start a gap, uh, program for recreation. And the county is in support of this project. So there's a good chance that we can get some of that shortfall funded with the county as well and try to reduce that down even further. And then we'll also be talking to, uh, possible corporate partners as well to get that project done.
I guess what I was thinking, what, what Loughlin was talking about, his portion was going to be in the neighborhood.
Yeah, you could possibly provide a hundred thousand.
There's that. Um, and then the Pick the Cana restrooms are almost finished. The guys are doing a great job. Uh, we'll have to paint the floors, hopefully next week, can I get the new stalls in, the sinks done, and be ready for another season. That'll look really, really nice. Um, so that's about it. Just let the weather play out the rest of the way, and we'll get going full more. Thanks for coming.
I don't have too much other than, uh, what is it? No, Monday, the eighth, we got that eclipse in Erie, so everyone's advising us to try and stay off the roads unless you need to be. And I'm not sure, nobody's really sure how big of a deal this would be because we cast a hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand people. If that many show up in Erie after the eclipse is over, it's going to be hard to get off the roads and out of town. Just simply because, uh, that's like a pro football game or an NASCAR event. And Erie and I ninety right here at our location really isn't set up for it. Hopefully, the people will be spread out between Cleveland and Buffalo and the wall. Just hope for the best. So, all right, that's all I got for now. Uh, public input, three minutes, please. And if you, if you want to say something, come up to the podium and give us your name and address, please. Go ahead.
My name is Stephen Moffett, I live at two eight two four Sunset Trail. And I just want to talk a little bit, I know that it went into effect today. I want to talk about the recycling. And I know, Jack, I've been in, I've read all the newsletters. I've read your comments about it and the work that, you know, the township has done to try to figure out and navigate that waters. But in twenty twenty two, it was a hundred and seven thousand dollar budget for the township for recycling. And then when the bills came out, you know, for Pro, they just added twelve dollars per month resident. So when I sit there and I start looking at the twenty twenty census and think about how many dwellings that are in Summit Township, it was stated that there was three thousand, three hundred and sixteen dwellings, and two hundred and three of those are vacant. So if you sit there and you start doing the math at a hundred and forty four dollars a month, we're now going to pay the waste management companies almost four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for recycling. That's almost ten percent of the township's complete budget at five point two million. If I look at my Erie County tax bill, it's a ten percent increase on my county tax bill that you guys claim you don't get any money from the county. And I understand all the work that Summit did, but I'm really thinking that it's a Pennsylvania recycling problem. That I think if Summit is going through this painstaking task of trying to find somebody to pick up recycling, what's going on at Mill Creek? What's happening in Green Township, McCain Township, Union City? Is it coming to them next as soon as their contracts expire?
Well, that's to do with how many people too. You have to have over five thousand people within your municipality.
So is Summit the only one that's over five thousand?
Well, Mill Creek most definitely is our creek house. But Green Township, no. Union City, no.
But the city of Erie's got recycling, who's doing theirs? I mean, the city of Erie, I mean, God knows what happens to them as soon as.
They do their own.
You know?
It's paid.
Well, they love tax increases, so as soon as the, the bill goes up, they're going to pass that right on, you know, to the homeowners in Erie County or the city. And I haven't heard anybody yapping about, you know, recycling going up there. And I, and that's where I guess it's, it's like, does Summit need to reach out to other, you know, to Harbor Creek and that type of stuff and say, hey, what are you guys doing? Can we all come to an agreement? Because it paying in twenty twenty two, a hundred and seven thousand dollars, that's what Summit was paying. And then to sit there and go, hey, it's a, it's a four hundred percent increase? Who's making the money? Because my regular garbage bill didn't go up four hundred percent. And the thing that I don't understand either, and, and, and Jack, you had mentioned it too. I mean, I'm, I'm a fourteen thousand one environmental auditor. So I go to companies and I audit for them to get their environmental surveys. I've walked the waste streams. Probably eighty five to ninety percent of the recycling goes to the landfill. It's not being recycled. So Summit gave three, you know, three thousand homes, we gave our leverage away. And it just kind of went to the garbage company to say, bill them whatever you want to bill them. It's twelve bucks this month, what's it going to be next year? Twenty bucks a month? You know, I have put a call into Bob Mersky's office to, to, to talk with him to say, hey, do we need to start getting the rest of the communities together to say, okay, if this is happening in Summit, it's going to trickle to other, other communities. What, what do we need to do? Does the state of Pennsylvania need to look at the Recycling Act one oh one and say, hey, this is no longer feasible for the state of Pennsylvania? And then we need to start looking at it that way. And I'll wait for Bob Mersky, and then my next call will actually be to Shapiro's office to say, hey, what needs to be done? So I guess my ask with the township is, don't just let the recycling die because you've taken out Summit Township and just put the hauler. Don't wash your hands of it. Stay in touch with it. I'll be in touch with you guys. Maybe we can partner and try to figure out, hey, maybe we can get Harbor Creek and some of the other townships on board to kind of help us push through some of the legalities that are around it. You know, that it's a little more palatable to everyone, you know, really within the state of Pennsylvania, not just Summit Township.
You are correct, that's, uh, that one oh one, this was from nineteen eighty eight.
Right, it's outdated.
Really outdated.
It might need to be revamped. You know, especially if this is the cost that's just being passed on. It's, I mean, four hundred percent?
Yep.
I mean, how do, I mean, how do you justify that?
A couple other facts, we haven't talked to people, is Mill Creek charges a hundred dollars a quarter for garbage pickup, the recycles are included, and then they, they put that on their water bill. So if you don't pay your water bill, then they'll shut your water off, a little leverage. They got fifty five thousand residents that are hard.
But to be honest, if my bill was a hundred dollars a quarter right now, I'd be happy. Because it's more.
And Harbor Creek just got a quote from, uh, Waste Management for the whole township. And that's eighty, excuse me, eighty nine dollars a month. That's a five year contract, but in the fifth year will be a hundred and sixteen. So it will increase in increments. I got a lot, I got a pretty, I thought that was fairly reasonable for what I pay for garbage myself.
And, and that's just it, when you really look at it, I mean, is it palatable? Yeah, but when does it stop? You know, like I said, I think it's more of a recycling problem, not just dollars and cents. Especially when you know what's actually happening to it.
Yeah, it's a shame.
It's not going to the proper waste streams. It's going right back to the landfill. So why are we paying, you know, a half a million dollars more to the waste hauler to just basically come around? Because I watch them every day, it's on my camera. It's one truck, it comes, grabs my garbage, grabs recycle in the same truck, and it goes to landfill and they empty it. There's no second truck that comes around. It's the same damn truck.
It's all, it's all that Act one oh one from the D E P. And we tried everything to hang on to just our, you know, little recycle area over here next to the garage. And for the most part, everybody loved it. And, and we tried talking to them, saying, we have something that works. We don't mind picking it up. We can't afford to do curbside pickup for everybody, it's not sustainable.
Right.
And they're like, no, you will provide curbside, maybe, you know, pickup. And that's, that's.
And that's, and that's where trying to read the language, and, and, and I say this not, don't take offense to it. But when you look at it, is Summit Township really providing recycling pickup for myself? I say no. You put together a plan that says, this is, this is what we're doing, but in the plan, you just removed Summit Township and said the hauler. So I'm now responsible for recycling and I'm paying the bill. And when I call up, you know, Pro and say, hey, I'm not accepting this increase, this is ridiculous. I'm one person. Before, it was, I mean, it was the entire township as a group that might have had a little more leverage. And now it's like I'm standing one by one, not as a unified township, to try to maybe have a little more, you know, muscle behind it to, to help us out. Um, but, and like I said, and that's why I think it's more.
We were hoping to keep the competition there too, because a lot of people past year complained about, don't let Waste Management take it all because they're, they got a monopoly, monopoly. That's what they got now, Mill Creek and Harbor Creek.
Yep.
Two biggest towns.
Right, and then you're, then what do you do? You call them and say, hey, I'm, oh, I can't leave you, you're the only ones here. So at least now you can play that game. Now, I pay one nineteen, one seventeen a quarter for waste with no recycling. But then you talk to somebody else and they pay seventy. If you go on the phone and wrangle and tell them you're leaving them, whoop, they drop it right down. But you gotta follow them constantly. They just keep bumping it up, bumping it up. Now, the other two don't do that, they stay solid. Strup and Pro, they seem to stay right where they're at, but they're way over, those two. It, it's nutty.
It is, it's.
Is there anyone providing recycling, really? Is the stuff that gets picked up from the township here, is that actually gone to a recycling facility? Or has it gone up to Waste Management and it's operated into the?
Waste Management?
And so this is, this is a second set of income for Waste Management, other than trash.
Well, I've asked the driver before, when he picks up, where do you, he said, why take this to the Sixteenth Street Transfer Station? And I didn't follow him to see where he went. Maybe that's just what he's told to say, I, I don't know. But you'd like to think they're doing something to somebody.
Well, they have to do the right thing.
Don't they have to give us tonnage reports on recycling though?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, how's that work?
We get them two years ago.
Well, that's right.
Raccoon never turned them in.
Yeah, I know.
So that must probably go in the trash.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you're right though, Steve, it's a state D E P or somebody better help us out here problem. And just expected us to do whatever. And they were the ones that suggested, just make your haulers liable for picking up, you did your part. All right.
And I get that, like I said, and that's why I'm not, I'm not trying to condemn you guys for, you know, for what you did. I mean, you're trying to work within the limits that you have. Um, and that's why I think it's more of, it's a recycling issue that goes, it goes beyond Summit Township.
It does.
Yeah, and you know, besides the expense, Waste Management takes some recyclables and hauls them all the way to Neville Island down on I seventy nine, how green is that? Semi load of plastic that no one wants, you know? Diesel fumes and tires and exhaust and the exhaust and fuel hog, kind of a shame. I'm, I'm all about green, it's just gotta come up, need some help, gotta come up with a better way.
Well, by doing an ordinance, at least it's an open ended deal, we can control the ordinance. If we did a five year contract, we'd be stuck for five years like the other guys are right now, so. And I don't think anybody wanted Waste Management to be the sole proprietor of the township either, you know? That's the feeling I get, I, I don't want them to be the only ones, because then you're out of luck. And then there goes two other companies, Strup, drag out of business, you know, he just got started. Summit, he get booted right out. Well, Advance, you said they bought Advance, right?
Mm-hmm. Waste Management.
Waste Management, what, Advance?
But you know, back a few years ago, when, when Raccoon was picking up our disposables, they were a hundred thousand dollars a year. And that was a palatable number and we paid for it. Uh, but the other two bits we got in, Waste Management was at two hundred thousand and Advance was at three hundred thousand. And that was probably four years ago, I don't know, five?
That was covered.
Five years ago, so now you can only imagine what those costs were. But the three bits we got in for recyclable haulers were one hundred, two hundred, and three hundred thousand dollar bits. Now it's five years ago, so you could most definitely double that number in the year twenty twenty four.
Yeah, and that's probably the worst thing too, because it was two thousand nineteen, it was the last year that you guys dealt with. Waste Management. Yep, and that was a hundred and thirty four thousand that was paid to Waste Management in two thousand nineteen.
Now, wouldn't have been Waste Management, they had.
Well, it was very budget. It was probably.
Oh, for waste, okay, not Waste Management Incorporated, just waste.
No, in, in the two thousand nineteen budget for expenses, at the end, it was a hundred and thirty four thousand, one hundred and thirty three dollars was paid to Waste Management. And then in twenty twenty, it went to Raccoon. And that was a hundred and five in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one was a hundred and eight. And then twenty twenty two was a hundred and seven, and then they went belly up. Okay, okay.
Yes? Hello, I'm Mike Porsche, twenty eight thirteen Sunset Trail. Um, I'd like to talk about the recycling as well. I'm in full support of what Steve said. My neighbor, I made a great speech. I guess my question to you is, you know, I've lived in Summit Township for thirty five years. So my, my question is, why did the payment of recycling shift from the township to the residence? I mean, Steve just said it went up from a hundred thousand to about four hundred thousand residents are paying. Why do the costs shift to the residence instead of the township?
It wasn't going to be a hundred thousand the next go around. When we were talking to the haulers before, before we did this, right? We were talking numbers in the three hundred percent of a thousand dollars. It gets pretty confusing unless you have automatic small amount.
Besides our discussion, take this.
Hmm.
That's my next newsletter, it'll be coming out real soon. But, but our budget's been tight too, especially because of COVID. Two years of COVID, everything on Peach Street was basically shut down. All the, no employees were working, there was no else, T tax, the casino was closed. They went from like nine hundred thousand a year to three hundred thousand. So, uh, not making any excuses, but that. So, uh, not making any excuses, but that, that COVID debacle's really catching up to us. Hopefully things are gonna level off, but.
I mean, every time I read the newsletter, I see, oh, welcome to employees, welcome to employees. You guys keep adding more and more positions in the township at our expense twice, right? We don't get as much services and we, we pay for the positions. And I guess my second comment on this is, is there a limit on what the carriers can, or the haulers can charge us? Where did twelve dollars a month come from? You know, certainly that's not the cost of hauling these away. If you were paying a hundred thousand dollars before and it's going up to four hundred thousand.
Strup said ten, Strup was ten dollars, Pro's twelve, crap here's the, the ways we own up. This is arbitrary number they made up.
Yeah, so it's, they can charge whatever they want, I guess. You've put no limit or restrictions on something that we're being forced to pay for. So if they wanted to come back next month and say it's a hundred dollars a quarter, they can do that. You've put no limits on this forced service that we have to pay for.
Real quick with the hiring thing, that was to replace retired, uh, employees. We don't have, we have less people now than we did a year ago.
Well, it must be health insurance or something else that caused your, your wage expense to go up about three to four hundred thousand dollars in a year, so.
And the other thing, and I'm sure you're aware of it, is, you know, through the Homestead Act, you pay zero township tax. And, and some people aren't aware of that.
Property taxes, but certainly you get a, a share of the income taxes.
No, no property taxes.
Yeah, there's no property taxes, but I, I work, so you get a share of the in, the local income taxes.
Correct. And, and then with Perry Highway Host Company, we're now paying them one million dollars a year that none of our residents are feeling.
That's elective though, right? That's elective, you choose to pay them that?
Yes, yep, to keep E-Med and fire protection alive in our township.
The state has their hands into that too. If they fail, Township has, is responsible for taking over. And like, gee, six or seven years ago, we got a price from Emergent Care, get an ambulance in our township twenty-four seven, and it was over eight hundred thousand then.
It's for an ambulance.
So, just so I have my notes right, there's no restrictions on what the haulers can charge us? And you don't know why you transferred the cost to the residents?
Well, we transferred the cost because everything's costing a lot more money now. And you don't pay taxes and we, either that or we're gonna go out the bit.
It could have been subsidized though, right?
Those are choices.
You could have paid a hundred thousand what you were paying in prior years and.
You could. We looked around, you know, we, like, Steve was talking about the other townships, what are they doing? Every last one of them, they all pay their own bill, you know? We looked around, we're like, they don't even charge our residents tax.
No, the residents pay tax. I mean, it's not fair to say that the residents don't pay tax.
There's not a little municipality that pays for people's recyclable pickups. It's all done through their tax base. So they charge their residents through a tax to pay for the recyclables that we picked up. We would, we were the only ones that were doing it for free, Act one, Raccoon.
So it makes sense for, to just do, make everyone else pay for it?
Correct.
Okay.
You're talking about income tax and things of the sort, don't?
Well, sure, cert, yes. We're all taxpayers in one way or another, right? Just property taxes, you know, there's multiple revenue streams. Property taxes are different than income taxes.
Yeah.
Yep. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Just, just one quick rebuttal, and if I'm wrong, please correct me. But, so Summit Township does not collect, you know, county tax or any property tax, correct?
No, county taxes go way down.
County. So Summit gets income tax. So you could say, you know, for the past twenty-five years, Summit Township has never increased taxes. And that would be a factual statement. But here's what some people don't realize. Every year, when I get my one and a half to three percent cost of living increase from my employer, Summit Township gets tax increases. Does you get more of that money?
No, I don't bring income tax.
So there's where the tax doesn't go off. It's a nice little, the way I like to look at it is, it's back to the end, Ed Randell made it where I will not raise the taxes in Pennsylvania. And he was true to his word. But my gosh, how much are you paying for a driver's license right now? Will we be paying for vehicle registrations right now? Ed Randell raised everything through fees. So Summit Township hasn't had a tax increase. But you kind of are doing it in different ways. Because we all kind of got tax increase this year, because you shifted fees to us.
Gotcha.
Makes good sense.
Do you have any thoughts when they're done?
Yep.
All right, you think?
I don't know, is anyone else? Yes, sir. I can fill a wire.
What would the state do to us?
He's a regular.
James Schenack, United Forty-One Old French Road, order for key. What would the state do to us if we didn't do anything about recycling?
Excellent question, James.
Well, so if we don't follow the Act 101, then there's funding that we get from the state that we need to take.
Liquid. What, what funding?
It's the liquid fuels that.
So how much is that?
State liquid fuels is what we pay for our trucks and our pavement, and our salt.
How much?
Two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars a year.
Okay.
In state liquid fuels.
But it's costing us four hundred thousand to recycle.
I don't know where that comes from.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Out of, out of private citizens' pockets.
Yep.
Correct. I don't know.
Maybe you guys can't do math, but to me, you're losing a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Or it's costing us a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars more.
So we doubt that everybody paid us through a tax.
You're right, but you'd still be a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars ahead. You'd have a hundred and fifteen thousand more dollars to pave the roads or whatever. It's not gonna go down.
From where?
From four hundred thousand.
No.
Where are you gonna get that from?
Four hundred thousand would still be there. We would just lose two hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Tax the people, you're, you're taxing the people now.
But we'd have to tax them like two hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Well, right, but you'd be ahead, you'd have two hu, you'd have a hundred and fifteen thousand more dollars in pocket.
You lose everything. We'd lose permits, we'd no longer be able to do business, we wouldn't be able to replace the bridge, we wouldn't be able to get a permit, we wouldn't be able to.
Until somebody stands up to the state, as Jack says, he's all green. I'm all for green, all these people are here for green. But it's not working. And until somebody like Mill Creek and Summit and Harbor Creek and get Cory and every other little town in Berg in here to stand up to the state and say, guys, you're working with a nineteen-nine, a nineteen-eighty-eight law, that doesn't work. It just doesn't work, there's no market for recyclable plastic.
And then you talk to Representative Mercy and Senator Lofflin, who's the ones that made those laws.
Well, exactly, but it's, you guys got more power than we do. You're the government with them, you talk to these people all day long.
No, numbers are bigger, Jim. They get twelve, two hundred phone calls from residents.
Well, that's fine.
Versus three phone calls from the supervisors.
Well, I've got a tree cut down, an hour, took me five years, they still didn't do it.
But it doesn't work, you guys, we need to do something as two million people in the state of Pennsylvania.
When we were talking to Dan Lofflin the other day, we made just a quick little, and he said, yes, he knows too. So this is just the tip of the iceberg now, you know, you gotta set the thing up. Here, everybody come in, talk about it and try to react. That's why I wanted to do the ordinance and not a five-year contract, because if we had to get out of it, for whatever reason, we probably aren't going to. If we did, we could, but who knows?
Like I said, Jack, you're, you, you think, right? If you drive two trucks around and it's, anybody seeing where the second truck goes? Or is there really two trucks? Pro hasn't started, because it just starts this month, and Strup hasn't started. But is anybody gonna see if there's two trucks coming around?
They have to give those tonnage reports.
Uh, Strup said, whether they do it or not, I don't know, but they made a statement that they'll have a separate truck for recycles.
Right, but let's just see if there is.
I was asking that before, I asked her, I know that truck don't have a separator, I see trash and recycles going in the rear, you know?
Yeah. It's going in one truck, it's only going one place, Robinson Road.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Ma'am.
Just real, just one real quick comment. I think just to keep in mind too, that there are people that live in the, in the township, there's one of them in a home, and very little garbage and very little recyclables. So I'm really surprised at, you know, a substantial raise in recyclables, which is twice in my, I recognize that one over here. But I'm saying, when you have two kitchen bags and garbage, and you're already paying ninety bucks a quarter, and then you're hyped up by another thirty for recyclables, it's sort of like, jeez, that's getting pretty expensive, you know? So just to throw that out there, okay?
I say the same thing, seniors, you know, that's thirty dollars a quarter. That's harder than some seniors, they can't pay that. They have the one bag, you got to be telling them to send.
Yeah.
They, they really care, and glasses included. What do we do? We have to come up with anything.
That's true, that's a good point, yep.
Don't they offer a smaller amount of trash pickup for people that don't have a lot?
Yes, they always, no, no, but Strup does. But the point is, now we're adding thirty dollars just for the recyclables. I have, I have probably ten things in my bucket, because I, I watch when I do.
Well, yeah, it's definitely not the perfect setup, that's for sure.
And especially if one person in the house.
Right.
Anyone else?
Yes. I'm Connie Goodwell from Lori Drive. Who was the smart guy that picked out those monstrous containers?
Girl. Not us. Must have been. What, the blue thing?
The containers.
Drive over around, see all the way in the new dentures, other than any people don't want them.
I don't, yeah, I picked this up.
We have gotten a few bags, but not many. We have gotten a few bags, but not many.
There's quite a few if you drive around with them. Second of all, in the wintertime, how old is?
And I said it's small.
An old lady, not myself. Old. We're gonna get that up, and we're gonna put it. The snowplow's gonna knock it over. If the snowplowed out, people turn around, the driveway's gonna knock it over. And with one person, it would probably take me a year to fill that thing up.
You, what did you have before, you should go back to that?
The little cream?
We brought it over.
You don't have to.
Before, our tax seller was taking care of the garbage, of the recyclables when you were picking them up.
Oh, the green ones.
You need another green one?
What?
You want another green one?
The green ones?
No, I don't want any.
Oh, okay.
No, I don't think we should have to have any. We had, we used a plastic bag like we always did.
And we bought those green ones.
Yeah, they won't let you.
We came up to township and bought the green ones, the smaller ones, they were ten dollars. I know that's a lot, but we had to buy them. Nowadays, I have a recycle little bit. And even now, just to buy a clear plastic bag, why not?
They won't let us, I don't know.
Was that just a change for this ordinance?
I guess not.
That we can't bag anymore?
No, I think it's always, it always had to be loose in a container.
Why?
It gets caught.
I think, I think what happens when they drop it off at the recycling station, then they have to physically open all the bags and empty them out. The bags would get caught up in their sorders. Uh, so they just said strictly loose recyclables in a container is all they would expect.
Oh, we gotta make it easy for everybody else, but make it hard on the people that there's only one in the household. One. And there's gonna be months that that won't even go out, but we still gotta pay. That's not right. What about the people that go to Florida? They're gone six months a year, what about them?
You shut your service off? Do you shut your service off when you go, Connie? Or you don't go, whoever goes to Florida, they stop their garbage service where they're going, don't they?
Well, they don't.
I don't know.
No, they don't shut it off. You still have to pay.
Oh, good. I don't know, I don't go to Florida here. Are they gonna beat you?
Well, if I made the money you do, I'd go to Florida right now.
Yeah, I oughta live there and work here. Yeah. All right, well, we're working on it.
So can I consider, do you want to build people in one household? Or older people?
Yeah, we thought about everything, we took the easiest, best way to go. That would be easier, easiest on everybody.
Well, you didn't have a meeting.
We had a lot of meetings, nobody comes to them.
No, you didn't have a meeting about that? If you did, you didn't advertise it. Right?
Yeah, we did, we did. It's a long story, we advertise every meeting, nobody looks, nobody reads, and then they come and say.
Well, you're not making it interesting then.
No, apparently not. At any rate.
Right?
That's right, it's not interesting at the moment.
So does somebody want to pick up that little thing, or what do you want me to do with it?
Leave it out bottom row, we'll get it. Yeah, we picked up a lot of them already.
So then you say we're still gonna get charged for recycling, maybe?
Yep. Until we figure out another way, but I don't think.
Why didn't we figure this out before it started?
What? Do I? I can't hear it.
Figure it out before you start it, we got everybody all disgusted about it.
Well, the other way that needs to be done is, is, you know, Township is working with the law the way it is, the state law the way it is.
Oh, the law?
That's what needs to change.
The law says that every three months we have to send recyclables?
Once, once a month.
The law says that there has to be curbside recycling. What, because of the population numbers that Summit Township has, there has to be curbside recycling. And, oh, I'm sorry.
And it should be provided by our tax seller.
Well, we'd have to, we would have to raise our taxes, which, right?
You already did, the gummy tax just went up, I'm like, three taxes.
But that's not, that's not township, that's. We're, we're the only township that's not charged a tax, as far as property tax. We're the only township. You won't find another township in Erie County that charges you zero dollars as a township resident. You, when you get your tax bill, it will have a county amount of a thousand dollars. And if you look at the line under it, it'll say Township Tax, zero.
We got those examples?
I didn't think we were talking about township tax, I thought we were talking about recyclables.
But you said that the township should pay for that, for us to pay for that.
Before, I said, why didn't we change it?
Well, it was a hundred thousand dollars and we, we paid for that. But when it went up to four hundred thousand dollars, we can't afford to pay for it.
The little guy can't afford to pay for recycling, being a garbage eater.
All right. What else we got? We can talk.
Well, let's have a meeting about it, see what we can do. Let's invite the whole township, so we all know what's going on.
And I've gotten a hold of Dan Lofflin myself, he had help there too, complaining that our state legislators, everyone said we're gonna get penalized to put them out of the program. But when you ask them, that nobody wants to talk about it, it's a problem, you know?
Did you think we needed such huge containers? How do you think that, like I said, no old lady, but not me, are gonna get that to the road?
And also, we did buy the green ones, why couldn't we tell them, why didn't we pay them that money?
No, we gotta, we gotta buy them back.
Yeah, I know. You can use, you can use a green one if you wanna still use a green one.
Can they pick them up with the truck?
No, they'll just have to get out of nothing.
Don't.
Too bad. You don't want that big thing. They said, we're not gonna make you keep it. You didn't pay for it, so we're not gonna make you keep it. All right, what do you got?
Anyone else? I know, I do have, I do have some information up here, if anyone would like to take it home with them. That's my newsletter with a lot of facts, and that's the tax exempt form. Anyway, motion to adjourn. Charlie?
Second up.
All in favor?
All right. Aye.